Buenos en Hafa Day. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is reconvening this public hearing, which was called primarily initially on Thursday, March 7th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m., but due to the emergency session, we had to call for a recess. At this time, we are reconvening. Today is Wednesday, March 13th. The time is now 2:04 p.m. Public notices were sent out in compliance with open government law. It was broadcasted through KUAM, published in the Guam Daily Post, and provided via email to Senator stakeholders in the media, as well as posted in the government of Guam notices website. On February 28th, 2024, for the five-day notice, and Tuesday, March 5th, for the 48-hour notice. I want to acknowledge my colleague who's here today, Senator Joanne Brown. The purpose of this hearing is to receive testimony on two items. The first item is Bill Number 249-37COR, sponsored by Senator Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to add a new Section 1203.1 to Chapter 1, Title V, and a new Section 45112 to Article 1, Chapter 45, Title 10 Guam Code annotated, relative to allowing the Guam Coastal Management Program and the Guam Environmental Protection Agency to hire environmental law attorneys for their exclusive use. The second item of the agenda is Bill 198-37LS, sponsored by the Committee on Maritime Transportation, Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens by the, at the request of E. Congresen Menhobin Guahan, or the Guam Youth Congress, in accordance with 2 GCA Section 7102, an act to amend Section 3116 of Chapter 3, Title 16 Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring the distribution of driver's handbooks to Guam public high schools. The rules of conduct are as follows. Those who are called to testify will be, beginning with the government agencies, followed by those that confirmed in advance by my office on Monday, February 12th, prior to Monday, February 12th, and then followed by those that have signed up on the sign-in sheet. Those that are providing testimony will first be recognized by the chair before speaking. Please remember to state your name, your organization and position, if relevant, for record-keeping purposes. Senators will be given an opportunity to ask questions after testimony is given, and testimony and questions shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. Now, to begin the agenda. To hear testimony for Bill 249-37COR, sponsored by Senator Sabina Flores Perez, is an act to add a new Section 1203.1 to Chapter 1, Title V, Guam Code annotated, and a new Section 45112 to Article 1, Chapter 45, Title 10 Guam Code annotated, relative to allowing the Guam Coastal Management Program and the Guam Environmental Protection Agency to hire environmental law attorneys for their exclusive use. So I'd like to begin with opening remarks. So Bill 249-37 proposes to authorize both the Guam Coastal Management Program and the Guam Environmental Protection Agency to use federal funds to hire classified environmental lawyers pursuant to Section 4103G in H of Chapter 4, Title 4 Guam Code annotated. Those sections read: G. A person may be employed in the classified service contingent upon the availability of a grant, federal program, or federal funds. An appointment in the classified service may be commensurate with the duration of a grant, a federal grant, federal program, or federal funds, including renewals and extensions thereof. H. A person may be employed in a professional-level position in the classified service for a specific project or program. An appointment in the classified service may be commensurate with the duration of a specific project or program. So Guam EPA and Guam Coastal Management Program are predominantly federally funded entities, and in the case of Guam EPA, salaries are predominantly funded federally for decades now, probably since the time of Administrator Fred Castro, in response to the fluctuation of local funds to ensure maintenance of the, of an important regulatory body. Bill 249 aims to expand the use of federal funds to be used to hire classified environmental attorneys, which are essential in providing guidance in further updating our environmental regulations, many of which are decades old and in need of updating. The decrease of attorney capacity within the government has affected the recent forward progress of updating regulations such as the Recycling Revolving Fund, the Safe Drinking Water Act, the Underground Storage Tank, the Non-Containment Sulfur Dioxide, all which protect our water, our air, and our land, and our people. Both Guam EPA and BSP are tasked with adhering to stringent, oftentimes complex laws and regulations that protect our natural resources and environment. In many aspects of the work they're mandated to do, legal counsel specialized in environmental laws is essential for ensuring compliance and enforcement in accordance with these environmental laws, such as the Resource Conservation Act, or RICRA, the Comprehensive Environmental Response Compensation Liability Act, or CIRCLA, also known as Superfund, the upcoming finalized rule pertaining to regulating PFAS, the forever chemical, under the Safe Drinking Water Act, and many more, as well as developing these action levels for dildrins to protect our island and people. BSP is tasked as a centralized planner of the government of Guam, which includes the management of our vital natural resources. To adhere to critical and nuanced environmental protection and management statutes, legal counsel for Guam EPA and the coastal management must possess an institutional understanding of the agency's governing policies and programs, and with the rapid updating of environmental policies throughout the country, they're responsible for making decisions that are vital to our way of life. As specific islands inhabit spaces at the front lines of climate change and militarization, availing these agencies with consistent exclusive legal expertise will help ensure our environment and people are protected. Authorizing these agencies to hire environmental lawyers serves the public interest because it provides a specialized knowledge of these environmental regulations and enforcement actions if necessary. It strengthens our regulations, is cost-effective, and provides consistency in an agency's day-to-day operations. Bill 249 is a measure that is needed to strengthen the capacity of GuamPA and BSP to carry out their important work of managing and protecting our drinking water, our land, our ocean from pollution and contamination. We are fortunate to have these resources, lands and an ocean our people have harvested for millennia, an aquifer and freshwater rivers that we must protect for ours and future generations. I look forward to the discussion and support, and, of support on these important, this important measure. So to us, Masi. So, in addition, invitations were sent to BSP, Guam Environmental Protection Agency, both the board and the agency itself, and the AG. The fiscal note states that the bill allows, sorry, the, sorry, my apologies. The fiscal note states that, according to the BSP response to hire prospective environmental law attorney, the cost impact for a full-time environmental lawyer is estimated to be $115,678. That's broken up into salary plus benefits. Additionally, BSP recommends changes to the language to address hiring and funding challenges, and we will hear that shortly. Further BBMR, further states, or the fiscal note states, that although the bill authorizes hiring of an environmental law attorney using agency's federal funds, it does not restrict the use of local funds to continue such employment in the event of federal funds are insufficient or not available in subsequent fiscal years. So, at this time, sorry, I would like to recognize Senator Chris Burnett. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to receive testimony, and thank you for taking your seats so efficiently. And so we'll start with Director Lola Leongaro and BSP for their presentation.
Hafaree. Lola Leongaro, Director of the Bureau Statistics and Plans. We did provide written comments on March 5th, but I'm actually not going to go over, I'm just going to provide some verbal and just provide some highlights of, because there are two recommendations that I would also like to include language into the bill. BSP is in support of this legislation, Bill Number 249-37. However, I'm kindly requesting for the following language to also be included. Under the draft legislation, it only references the Guam Coastal Management Program, and we recommend the following language, Bureau Statistics and Plans Guam Coastal Management Program. So the Guam Coastal Management Program is one of the four programs of BSP, but of course, this attorney would be funded under the Guam Coastal Management Program. The next one is, you know, to kind of explore, you know, we say references to environmental law attorneys, also to explore hiring, to be, I guess, consistent with the government of Guam job classifications for attorneys. There's attorneys 1, 2, 3, and 4, and then maybe, you know, to allow for that with an environmental law background. And then the next point, which was actually part of the written testimony, was, you know, to, the draft legislation specifically references the ability to hire a classified environmental law attorney. It would be more beneficial for our agency to also allow for the hiring of attorneys like to an unclassified position. So the recommended language that we provided in the written testimony is, the attorney shall be hired as a classified or unclassified attorney, to include but not limited to temporary appointment, limited-term appointment, and competitive limited-term appointment. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll save the questions for later. So, yeah, thank you for that. Mr. Edwin Rages, great to have you here. So I believe you have a presentation for us?
Yes, I do, Hafaree. And if you could pull up my presentation. Well, that's coming up. My name is Edwin Rages. I'm the administrator for the Guam Coastal Management Program, and it is an honor to be staffing my director, who I hold in extremely high regard, and who has also been a mentor to me. So the points that she had made in terms of the mechanisms for hiring, I think that is certainly very valid in the way that the Department of Administration goes throughout their process of hiring. So I urge the committee to take that under consideration. My presentation will focus on a kind of a descriptive overview of how a legal attorney and environmental attorney will fit in the mission of the Bureau, and how that contributes to the functionality and the role that we play in natural resources management. So, right off the bat, our goal is to create the responsible and balanced use of Guam's coastal resources through improving management and policy systems, optimizing planning, creating awareness, and improving the administration and enforcement of natural resource-related laws and regulations. And the source of this goal can be found in our enabling, in our enabling legislation, as well as subsequent updates to our authorities, as well as our programmatic environmental impact statement and our executive order that we follow to enforce, to, as we enforce our policies. The objectives, and I want to highlight the first two as a primary focus for this particular bill, in terms of which it will enhance, is the effective administration of natural resource-related laws, programs, and policies, and I'll go into depth of what the administration means and how this position can fulfill the needs in looking at administrative matters. The second one is very clear, is the enforcement. This is the, you know, the mechanisms of what do you do when someone violates the regulation or statute? The other two, which speaks to increase public awareness and the implementation of a management program that encourages prudent development, are not necessarily too germane for this, but I think it certainly will be relevant if we're looking at the overall systems process moving forward. Next slide, please. So here's a functional chart, and again, I provided this to you so you'll have a kind of a greater understanding of the, where this position will fit, and what are the functions this will serve in terms of our natural resources issues. So on, we basically break it down into leadership, cooperative agreements, and services and technical support that span across the entire program. So I started with the coastal water resource function. We provide technical review for the Application Review Committee for all matters before the Guam Land Use Commission. And if we're looking at the impacts to resources from a comprehensive standpoint, from a land use standpoint, I would, I think there is evidence for a strong argument that the BSP, Guam Coastal Management Program, is a one agency that's looking at comprehensive and long-term impacts through that comprehensive lens to our environment. So you have great agencies, such as Department of Agriculture, EPA, to name a few, who will look at the application based on the regulatory standard and whether or not it meets that threshold. We're looking at applications through the comprehensive, through more of a comprehensive lens and through a land-use lens, and that's, that's in line with our mandates. We also bring together, through the Guam Silver Jackets Program, this body of federal and local agencies that looks, that looks at all hazards. So when you think of hazards, one of the major issues that come to mind is flooding. We're all familiar with the flooding problems down in Mariso, Pago Bay, Paragata, for example, in which we're able to broker technical information, both local and federal, to address those flooding issues. As I will bring up some examples of the legal challenges in addressing that, I think that there certainly could be a direct benefit from addressing those legal challenges in my slide in a few moments. The coastal non-point source pollution is one of the other projects that we work with, and this is with the Guam EPA as a co-chair in our watershed committee. Again, we're looking at a watershed scale, and in the watershed scale, you have a full dynamic range of different owners for, so you have public, private lands, things like roads, all these contributing factors that come together in this complex network that are, are ways that pollution enters into, into our water. We also work with different federal, federal partners, again, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Civil Works Projects, and then we work with some, the Northern and Southern Water Conservation Districts. To, I'll describe the conservation districts function, which is the efforts that we're doing to support the establishment of terrestrial and marine conservation districts. And so we want to ensure that the Guam Forest System Plan, and this is a creature of law, that that is, eventually becomes validated and formally adopted through the AAA process in which we can establish the conservation, the conservation district, so that we can then have the legal framework to start investing in these properties. And so this plan has not been brought before the legislature just yet. We are still going through the administrative adjudication law process, but it's going to be almost three, 13,000 acres of government of Guam property that we think can be viable and will serve a real important function in, for system health, which will then produce other ecosystem benefits, such as, of course, water quality and erosion. The marine side of the House, we are working on the Territorial Seashore Protection Act, which is to produce the seashore reserve plan, and these are plans that have been in the books for a while. So I want to kind of shift the focus to the orange box, and this is our federal activities function. Most of you are familiar with federal, what's called federal consistency, and federal consistency is a provision of the Coastal Zone Management Act, which ensures that any federal activity, and federal activity can be described as, you know, general federal activities, such as the military buildup, activities requiring federal financing grants, for example, that's a major one, and then also a permits that are required of federal agencies, that they be consistent with Guam's enforceable policies. And if I could just turn your attention to the handout that I provided, you'll see the list of enforceable policies from page 1 through about page 3. So in page 4 is when things become much more complicated, you'll start to see the different laws and regulations in which we enforce those policies. And they, they consist of different regulations related to multiple agencies who have their own unique and distinctive enforcement capabilities. So federal consistency is a way to kind of reach across the agencies and to take advantage of their enforcement capabilities, so that we can apply that to the actions that are before us through federal consistency. The main challenge, if, if, you know, glancing through this thing, I often, you know, kind of get dizzy because this thing is extensive, requires constant, constant attention, it requires subject matter experts to really immerse themselves in terms of what the statute is requiring, and then the ability to make sense of that in real-world situations that are not necessarily specific, are not necessarily specific to a project, for example, but do apply to projects across multiple areas. So the legal, the legal capability, just in that sense alone, certainly be a very important, that would be beneficial to the program. And then, in the lower end of this bar, you have our basic kind of grants administration and outreach, how that spans across the different functional areas. If you, next slide, please. So here are some of the questions that come up in terms of how do we address our flooding issues, for example. This flood policy topic, if you're familiar with our Assembly of Planners Symposium, was a summary of different issues that the technical experts in EPA, DPW, agriculture, all other partners relating, dealing with flood, have brought up as an issue. And so trying to address these issues, such as the subdivision requirements that do not apply to piecemeal parceling and parental subdivision and summary zone changes for the purpose of subdivising five lots, is a huge undertaking. So this will require extensive legal reviews to map out how this practice is occurring, and then propose specific acute legislation that can be then backed up by, you know, can be substantively backed up through technical and, and expert, expert advice, so that we can propose solid changes to, to the legislation or the rules, whether they're both in stat, either in statute or in the administrative, the gar, so that the appropriate action can be, can be taken. Things like minimum development requirements for individual homeowners, we know that that is an issue. Things like, you know, regulating walls, constructions of walls, that's one of the building features that we see coming up in response to flooding. You have a neighbor who is experiencing flooding, he, he or she builds a wall, and that flooded, those floodwaters are redirected downstream. So the list of flood topics are certainly very extensive, they're certainly meaningful in terms impacts to the community, and by having that legal support to really understand the legal framework, that these, these overlay is critical to the mission. Next slide, please. In terms of our planning function, and I'm very thankful that my director brought up the need to support the Bureau of Planning, is that we're mandated to produce a comprehensive development plan. And so we have other planning initiatives that were either adopted through executive order or through public law, such as the Guam Forest Legacy Act of 2012. We are finally making some real progress on this plan, and despite it being, you know, quite authorized quite some time ago, and will be, but it speaks to the, the benefits and importance of comprehensive planning that we'll be able to, finally be able to produce a plan that we can then start moving towards the conservation. The Territorial Seashore Protection Act of 1974, that's been authorized for quite some time now. We feel that it is certainly very important to protect our shores and to ensure that we have a solid plan in place to protect this valuable resource, but there are challenges with the way that the law is written, and that we're acting on this based on our, our coordination, general coordination capabilities within the Bureau of Planning. 1978 Caballos and Plan in Paraguayan, we can only implement the district maps because that plan itself was not formally adopted. So the only one plan that we really have in the books is a 2010 North and Central Land Use Plan, and even that is already becoming quite antiquated. We have the Southern Development Master Plan, which we try to provide some support to, but there are some real challenges with the way that law is written. And then, of course, for those who have been around for 10 years or so, we remember the Guam 2065 executive, which is executive order built from the Imagine Guam process. It's authorized but inactive. So the big picture here is you, there's a lot that went on between public law 12 to 100 and public law 35-110, which this body put forth and passed. So I'm going to kind of unpack the public law 35-110 real quick. It, next slide, please. So it's gonna, it's relative to renewing the Guam Comprehensive Development Plan to encompass principles of sustainability. There's a special focus on the UN Global Program of Actions for Sustainable Development of Small Islands Developing States, and it bases it on UN Sustainable Development Goals, and it requires 20 elements as opposed to 17. Next slide, please. So here's an index of how we kind of catalog the different elements and, as a way to ensure that as we're developing this comprehensive sustainability plan, that we are meeting the intent of the law. Next slide, please. And it gets more confusing. So, in order to kind of try to unpack this, we said, it's going to be too much to go through the elements without some kind of clustering of different focal areas. So when we're trying to think of what is sustainable, sustainability, we came up with the four different dimensions, where you have the economic dimension, social culture dimension, governance dimension, and environmental dimension. Next slide, please. We went ahead and then broke this down in terms of where we think this would fit into statute. Again, this is all making sure that we provide a plan that's going to meet the intent of the law, so that we can then move forward in describing the goals, objectives, future alternatives, existing conditions, and ensuring that the planning rigor goes into producing the solid document that is going to chart the way for our future. Next slide, please. And so we started off with interviewing agencies. Right now, we've already finished the policy frame, the, we did a first pass of the regulatory framework in terms of how we think the different agencies will reach into their authoritative framework, and then be able to then open the aperture so they're able to receive our planning direction, and then act upon it, because they're really going to be the ones, in addition to BSP, to ensure that this plan is enforced. We all hear about plans being created, and then plans being on the shelf. So this is one way that we're ensuring that this is not going to happen to this Guahan 2050 Sustainability Plan. So we finished the roundtables, and one of the resounding comments that we received from agencies is that it's got to be a legal framework to make sure this is in place. And there's also got to be a community involvement, a strong community involvement piece, which, which makes sense. I think that communities need to be empowered so that they can look to this plan and hold us government officials and government employees responsible for making sure that we're working towards that plan. Next slide, please. So we're looking at the, we developed this comprehensive planning decision framework in which BSP, if this plan, you know, right now, as we're kind of charting it, we don't know what this is going to look like at the end, it still has to be brought before this body, that BSP will serve as this kind of quarterbacking role, in which the information that will disseminate down through a clear and structured process to agencies, so that all agencies know that the work that they're doing will be aligned with whatever the, whatever the elements are that we had described in the earlier slides. And that this is an iterative process, that it will be evaluated, and then the planning will, will continue, and then will be updated. Next slide, please. So the screening on the moments of influence, this speaks to the people who are at the front counter, it speaks to the developers, it speaks to the everyday, you know, person who wants to make a decision about what they want to do with their property, for example, or what, or how they're reviewing an application before them. So you take in the different considerations, you have the infrastructure, the zoning, environmental, the different statistics that we have, and there's a whole bunch of different decision support tools that we use in, in all of our agencies. For example, DPW looks at the flood insurance rate maps, we look at what's called the Coastal Change Analysis Program to look at change in the watershed and whether or not this will impact that, that particular watershed, and then we have to come up with a conclusion. Is this going to produce, what are the effects going to be? Because we, you know, we want to make sure the development is good, but we need to also specify what is good development, so we kind of rank that in terms of what effect will that have, and whether or not that's an indirect or direct effect. Next slide, please. What we want to make sure that we do, and this is where the legal support would be very important, is that then we have to tie that into, well, where does the, show me that in terms of policy. If you're going to deny my permit, where is that in your policy, and can you? If you're going to deny my permit, where is that in your policy, and can you cite the statute? So that's what this slide will, will demonstrate, is that if there is an effect, we know exactly where that's going to link to. So the middle column and the, kind of the center, this blue on that screen, but that's the enforceable policy, and then that then drills down into the legal standards, or the, the standards and legal mechanisms. Next slide, please. And so, there's a lot of different reference documents and different mandates, and that encompass development or regulating development on island, and we feel very strongly the comprehensive development plan, that this body pass will be a mechanism to be able to coordinate all that, but the tremendous amount of work that's going to go into promulgating the rules is extensive. And even thinking about how to promulgate rules is an extensive process. So, we'll be able to improve our capacity in terms of the legal capabilities, and work with our network agencies to really try to scope out, how are we going to do, you know, how are we going to do updates, let's say, to the sea shore reserve, or how are we going to, what are we going to do in terms of updates to minimums, you know, take, take requirements for enlisted species? And so, by adding that functionality to us, I think will be beneficial, and that will, if we're, if our processes and our effectiveness is increased, and that means that the resources that we protect will be, be much, just, just as protected and for our future generation. So I'll stand ready for any questions, if you have.
This is Massey Administrator Rages for that very detailed presentation, and we'll definitely have questions after. For now, I'd like to recognize Deputy Administrator Nick Ruble. Acting, acting, okay, you're recognized.
Hi, Alfred, and good afternoon, Senators. Thank you for the opportunity for Guam EPA to provide testimony and support of Bill 249. Our Administrator Michelle Lastimosis, since her regrets for not being able to appear before you this afternoon due to a conflict in schedule, and she's asked that I provide her testimony this afternoon. Guam EPA urges the passes of, passage of this measure. As you're all aware, our environmental laws and regulations provide the framework for protection, conservation, and sustainable use of our environment and our natural resources. More importantly, these laws protect people from significant health risks, and authorize us to develop and enforce environmental regulations within the regulated community in order to stop or correct activities that endanger the environment or public health. Since the enactment of the federal environmental laws in the 1970s, the environmental law field has grown by leaps and bounds. New laws tackle environmental health, health and safety, energy, climate change, and natural resource challenges. Environmental laws are an enormous and complex specialty. Those interested in this type of practice can expect a heavy administrative, civil, and criminal law component. An attorney representing Guam EPA may focus on water, land use, pollution, solid waste, hazardous waste, climate change, energy, wildlife, and marine conservation, just to name a few. Guam EPA is currently without legal representation. This leaves us without anyone to defend the agency's actions under environmental regulations or bring enforcement actions pursuant to environmental laws. Prior Assistant Attorneys General, who have represented the agency, have provided counsel on drafting policy, advised on pending legislation, compliance, and enforcement cases, and advocated on our behalf on a wide range of issues involving public interests, or participating in negotiations on behalf of Guam EPA for individuals or communities impacted by environmental harm. It is because Guam EPA operates in the context of federal and local statutes, regulations, and policies, that it necessitates having legal representation. An in-house legal counsel will help preserve due process for enforcement and compliance cases, provide guidance and advice when the agency seeks clarity in parts of regulation that are not clear, so that we could make sound government decisions to protect the community. Additionally, an in-house legal counsel will review draft statutes, rules and regulations, assist with the review of contracts and RFPs, and liaise with the AG's Solicitors Division to ensure that we're complying with the procurement process. We've lost a technical asset, one that played a critical role in our agency, not only by navigating the legal system or building a strong case or defense, but ensuring our rights and the rights of those accused of wrongdoing are not violated. In-house counsel advocates for us, represents us, mediates and negotiates for us. Bottom line, in-house counsel protects us, we need our legal representation. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today, and I'm available to answer any of your questions.
This is Massey, Nick, for that testimony. I'd just like to recognize Senator Shelton, thank you for being here. Okay, so now for the, the questions, maybe starting with BSP, thank you for that very thorough presentation, and it's, you, you made this, the strong case that there really is a need for that in-house expertise to be there, considering all the mandates, and that BSP is the centralized planner for GovGuam. And I guess the, the questions that I have in regards to more of the implementation, so I think one of the recommendations is to include temporary appointment, limited-term appointment, competitive limited-term appointment, and so, I just want to bring your attention back to the citation that the bill references. Would that be sufficient? Because it seems to me that, I guess, maybe if I can ask, what was the reasoning behind adding the language of temporary appointment, limited term? Because I'm wondering if this current citation would satisfy, you know, for instance, federal funds not being available, because I think it, it contemplates that, according to 44103G, it says a person may be employed in classified service contingent upon the availability of grants, federal funds, or federal, federal programs. So, I guess maybe I can ask, what was the reason for asking for limited-term appointments?
Well, I think it's the, allowing us the, a way to hire an attorney, so for example, if, if Edwin had gone to some coastal state organization meeting, finance services attorneys that might be interested in coming to Guam, there are quicker where you get the individual profile, and we do a, it'll be a limited-term GG one. Now, in reference, we, you know, I had spoke with the RASO with regards to, how can we hire a classified employee? And then that language, I think that language in the law was relevant to competitive limited-term appointment, stating, because they're saying classified services, but basically, if you're a classified employee with the Government of Guam, whether you have, you're classified, you're basically funded, unless you pick them up as a competitive limited-term appointment versus a regular classified employee status. And, and that's kind of because we would need to, if, if we don't have the federal funds, we know salaries, there's, you know, salary increments and promotions, and so we don't have the federal funds, you know, we won't be able to sustain the, the individual, that individual as a classified employee will need to go, we would need to find another place for the attorney outside of BSP, we don't have the funding. And so, the language, at least for a limited-term appointment, it will allow BSP to hire someone quicker, and maybe an attorney with a legal background. I did have a discussion with Edwin on this, you know, where, you know, because they're, how, how are we going to find someone who's going to be attracted to work, apply with whatever the salary is? So he had mentioned there is, I guess, a school of law, that environmental law, that we could possibly recruit from. And the way to do this was really to bring them on board, was to bring them on board through LTA, versus hiring, and then from there, go through the, if we want to maintain, it would be a competitive limited-term appointment versus a classified position. And Edwin can address, go ahead.
Yeah, and if I can just add to that, trying to recruit professionals in this field is, has been difficult, and so part of the challenge is, is that we have a very described employee position classification. So for example, planners would be in the Planner Series, but in other states and territories with a much more, I guess, refined position, it'll be coastal planners. So when we're going to recruit out, we're, we're going to have to look at what are the available positions in the Department of Administration list, and then recruit according to those specifications. So, we just need to be sure that the law matches what's currently in the Government of Guam listing, or if I may make recommendation that, or maybe would be beneficial to establish a certain position, so that way we can draw from. But either way, we have to kind of look back at what the, the position is, and then follow the very prescriptive process of hiring that position. So if it's going to be a classified position, then we have to do the announcement, we're going to have to, you know, hopefully people will apply, and then, and then DOA will screen it, they'll write their reviews, et cetera, and then they'll, then we receive a list, and then from that list, we, we can move forward with interviewing, and then hire, then selecting. A limited-term appointment will give us more flexibility, and we've used this to bring on some dynamic people into the shop, who's working on some great things, such as our enhancement areas and our sea shore reserve planning through the limited-term appointment process. We know that's a temporary approach, and our long-term commitment is to give those employees an opportunity to pursue a classified position.
Okay, but there's nothing currently in law prohibiting, prohibiting you guys from hiring limited-term staff, is that correct? So in this, this way, you can still hire limited-term, is that correct?
Yeah, but I don't think, we, we can't hire an attorney.
Attorney, limited-term, okay.
Well, we can hire an attorney, period.
Attorney, period, okay. Yeah, I, I do recall there was some legal assistance, was that through the AG's office, though?
Yes, and it was through an MOU, and we were funding part of the salary, or actually funding the salary of an attorney at the AG's office, but the attorney was with the AG's office.
Okay, okay, great, I'll probably, oh, go ahead.
And if I can just make, maybe, bring some attention, maybe it could be the word classified, attorney could maybe be the, you know, thing we're struggling with identifying.
Sorry, can you repeat that, Edwin? There was something else?
I retract my question.
Okay.
My response.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, that, I guess that's one of the issues too, like, you know, classified, we're trying to shore up the classified system, right, to a merit system. And I know we have this tension where, you know, we bring in temporary, temporary staff, and I understand that, you know, your situation is, you know, could be unique, but, yeah, well, definitely we need to reach out to DOA, and kind of figure the language, but, yeah, I guess my, my tendency or preference is to promote the classified service, yeah, and I don't know, maybe we have to update, it looks like we have to update some positions, is that, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing? Edwin, when you said we have to make sure it matches the description, if it's a classified employee?
I can maybe just offer some observations in terms of our challenges with trying to find individuals with background, knowledge, capabilities to do the work in coastal resources planning, is, is challenging. You know, Guam, we don't have a, we don't have a school of natural resources, so we're not really producing the type of graduates that would be a natural fit for some of the work that we're doing. So, we are in discussion, and this was a finding in our evaluate, in our 312 evaluation, that we should, that we, we, it's recommended that we're, you need to put some effort into investigating the, or at least to propose a position that would best fit the kind of work that we do in GCMP. But I think that the structure within the Department of Administration does allow for that to happen, and we, we are currently going to pursue that, is my understanding.
Can I go ahead and chime in?
Of course, yeah.
So, so basically what's happening within, so we have planners, and it's very hard to recruit senior planners, like Planner 3s or Planner 4s with the natural resource background. If we had someone who has the back, a degree in, like, biology with the masters, they won't fit into the Planner Series, it would be a biologist. So what we're exploring is, we would have to create the position, we would have to do the legwork to do for Coastal Planner Series for the Bureau Statistics and Plan to align with the Guam Coastal Management Program, so that we can ensure that the individuals that we, we have on board, or future individuals, have that natural resource background that could do the work, because a lot of, you know, I mean, we're, we're, there are, there are some constraints, so we're, we're going to be working with Department of Administration, because we were informed we can, but it's up to our organization BSP, along with the Guam, the Coastal Management Program, to create the job specification for these Coastal Planner Series. So the same thing with the attorneys. So with the attorney, so what we've done in the past is we would bring, bring up, pick up someone on a limited-term appointment, maybe someone with a natural resource background, but if they get like the number of years' experience in planning work, then we, we move then towards a classified position for, for recruitment. Because we also want to make sure the individual that we're bringing on board, it's going to fit with the organization. And that's kind of way where you could get someone with that background that you're looking for, that's another avenue to bring in the person into the organization.
I see. Yes, that sounds like a good successional plan, right? And the proper use, I would think, of a limited-term appointment is you're, you're segueing them in some ways to, you know, training them up to a classified position, hopefully, right? Okay, so that's something that we need to look into further, perhaps, but thank you for your presentation. I have a question for Guam EPA. So, we did get some feedback from the Chair of the Board, the Board of Directors, Stephen Carbolito, and he, he just basically provided some things to consider. So if I can read it, basically, he says that, yeah, he, he saw, he saw the importance, first of all, of having an attorney in that, especially one that is consistent, the attorney that is hired, you know, full-time can provide consistency, because they're running up against some issues when it comes to the Recycling Revolving Fund, you know, as, as far as a mayor's go, in ensuring, well, I'll just read it. "It is important that there are no time gaps in coverage like they have right now. There should be an attorney contracted for every month of the year. There should be no issues as we go from fiscal year to fiscal year." And it talks about, there, he has some insight regarding the mayor's program, regarding, I guess, I'm assuming the reimbursement, I'm not exactly sure. The attorney, he said, "The attorney will be advising the agency on policy updates and developments, notice of violations, operational issues, MOUs, contracts, other legal related matters that arise weekly, if not more frequently." And then, "A few things to consider, who will be responsible for hiring the attorney? The attorney will likely be representing the agency, agency in the notice of violation hearings that are appealed to the Board. The attorney will not be representing the Board, and we will have our own hearing officer, that I assume will continue to be provided by the Attorney General's Office to represent and advise us. Also, the other consideration is to prevent the appearance of conflicts of interest at these notice of violation hearings. Perhaps the Board should not be approving the ultimate hire of the attorney, it would need to be flushed out, if the Board is the one who approves the hiring of the attorney." So, yeah, and then please ensure the intent on utilizing the GovGuam, on utilizing GovGuam payroll is preserved or considered, and the value to the public or taxpayers, and there's no runaway billings. So, do you have any responses to, to those considerations?
Sure, thank you, Senator, for sharing that. The reimbursement portion of Chairman Carbolito's point, it-
He didn't say reimbursement, I, I kind of added that part, too.
Oh, okay, well, I, I could provide some insight on that. So, our last board meeting back in February, we invited the Guam Solid Waste Authority General Manager to come in and provide a cost estimate on some of the expenditures that would be subject to reimbursement under the Recycling Revolving Fund, so you're familiar with that statute. So you're familiar with that statute of, GSWA can get a reimbursement of up to $400,000 annually. I think the question was, at what point can GSWA approach Guam EPA Board to approve the appropriation? So the way I understood it, it was, it was a question of a cash flow issue, perhaps? Would, would GSWA be able to submit for reimbursement on a periodic basis in a year up to $400,000 or would they have to wait until the end of the year and receive one entire reimbursement? So I, I know that in that meeting, request for some type of legal representation, or legal interpretation of that law was, was made. Up until January, we did have an AAG onboard as legal counsel and similar to how BSP described it, it was by way of an MOA where we would pay the salary and benefits and money just gets JV'd to the AG's office. So we don't have that capability anymore, so I think that's where Chairman Carbelito was going with representation or some type of legal counsel to give an interpretation and how we can proceed to satisfy the reimbursement with GSWA. As far as the recruitment of an attorney, I would imagine that we would just be subject to DOA's personnel rules and regs. If this thing was to become a law, I'm sure that we would go through the process to make the announcement. It's pointed out that you have attorney one through four, they're on a separate pay plan, pay plan from the rest of the government of Guam line agencies. I imagine that if you wanted to get specific on the field of law, you could perhaps indicate a selective factor, I mean, that's kind of putting the cart before the horse, though, so there's still, there's still some guidance that we would seek from DOA if, if we have the opportunity to request for a recruitment announcement of an attorney.
And do you see any potential conflicts of interest for a hearing officer, you know, attorney that represents the board versus the agency, or is there-
There's potential for that, sure. The, the way I understand it is if, if a respondent who receives an NOV goes through the appeal process, then the agency would have to contract a hearing officer. I believe the two avenues are either you make a request through the AG's office and if the AG's office isn't able to make that request, then you can go to, you can go to RFP to get a hearing officer, in which case, our legal counsel would be representing the agency's interests and not the board's, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. And as far as funding, so I know you both receive a lot of federal funds, do you have room in your federal funding to hire a attorney, classified attorney, full-time?
So I would say that the Coastal Zone Management Act was established in 1972 and that this is subject to congressional appropriations annually, but with 34 states and territories that comprise of the coastal membership, usually the appropriations for the CZM is a bipartisan issue. So we, we are confident that funding will be, will continue and that we, we did run the analysis and we, we can fund an attorney.
Okay, and compared to US pay?
We haven't done that in terms of the comparison, no, we haven't, but I would add that the coastal states, other coastal programs, almost all of them have access to legal support. It's critical to the, to the national mission.
Okay, and we should, we probably need to go buy our own pay plan, right, the attorney pay plan as well? Okay. And for Guam EPA, federal funds, availability for attorney, for full-time attorney?
Yes, at this time we do, we have been paying for an AAG for the past six years up until this past January. In fact, before any expenditure out of our consolidated grant issued by USCPA, we do have to seek approval, especially for an expenditure of that size, and our program manager with Region Nine has been very supportive of the agency having a legal counsel, so we would, we do have room in the budget to recruit an attorney.
Okay, thank you for your responses. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for questions. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. You know, I appreciate the presentation, you know, to try to justify the need for an attorney. My concern in looking at this with the issues is, what are we going to do? Have two layers of attorneys in every government agency and then on top of that have an Attorney General's Office? Because your in-house counsel will not be able to prosecute these cases that you bring forth. I know, you know, Bureau of Planning has extensive regulations, so does Guam EPA, substantial regulations that need to be enforced, but your attorney will not be able to do that. They'll provide in-house counsel, they'll provide you counsel on how to address your, when you give out your, what do you call them, you give out, sorry, my brain, my phone is ringing at the same time, but when you give out your, your notice of violations, that's the extent of what they'll be able to do. And I'm a little concerned because when we saw the exodus of attorneys out of the Attorney General's Office, all of a sudden there were all these positions of government of Guam that they landed. Some departments had several attorneys. So that is my concern, it's not the fact that you would need that legal counsel advice, but my concern is, are we going to double the payment of attorneys in every agency and then on top of that, the attorneys that we need at the Attorney General's Office actually are going to be in a position to prosecute cases? When I was back at Guam EPA, we actually did one of the initial agreements in the government of Guam to have in-house counsel that we paid for through the Attorney General's Office, so that we did have an Assistant Attorney General that was assigned to Guam EPA to address, not only advise us on how to proceed with these notices of violations and advise us on our regulations, but also be able to take these cases to where they need to go, which is ultimately the real enforcement arm. It's a comfort level for you in the department to have your attorney, but they don't prosecute. And I think that's where the real challenge is and has been for the government of Guam is prosecuting these cases so people actually realize and understand that these violations are serious. The lack of that is concerning and I don't know how that's going to change at all by having in-house counsel. So that's my reservation and I think I'd like to get feedback from the Attorney General's Office on how and if they're going to address it. I wanted to ask Guam EPA, what has happened since January with regards to having your Assistant AG provide you guys assistance?
Well, some of our, we do have two pending MOAs that we would normally have our AAG review before it gets sent for routing for legality and form. That's now being handled by the, by the program heads and hopefully that we won't have any issues once we're ready to route those for signature. I believe there have maybe been two or three NOVs that have been issued after we've lost our, our AAG. Those might turn out a little bit slower because perhaps maybe, as you mentioned, that comfort level of ensuring that, that the violations are interpreted correctly and the due process of the respondent is not violated, I would imagine that, you know, with that comfort level gone, it requires additional time for the program to produce that NOV.
So when you lost, what do you mean by lost your Assistant AG?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Was your Assistant AG returned, did they quit?
No.
They went on vacation, what happened?
We were just informed that our AAG was reassigned within the AG's office and that was that.
Okay, and did Guam EPA provide, did you provide the funding for that Assistant Attorney General?
We did, and that comes through the consolidated grant.
Okay, so you're not providing any funding now, I assume, if you don't have an counsel assigned to you?
That's correct.
Well, again, I understand the, the need, having been in your shoes, I totally know where you're coming from, but again, I have the reservation and I think this issue needs to be looked at at a little, you know, bigger picture. We can't just look at, there'll be, every individual agency will come in here and say, we need this, we need that, we don't have enough, we can't function, we can't think, we can't operate, but please send us a check every two weeks. We need to look at the bigger picture because I am concerned about the fact that, again, the Attorney General's Office provides this capability, which you will not have. As an enforcement agency, you need to have that. Otherwise, you're going to have one, you know, attorney putting it together to wait in line to hand it to an Assistant Attorney General that may be, you know, may perhaps prosecute the case. So I think we need to get more feedback with regards to that because I don't necessarily know that this is going to make things better in the area where it's most needed. I mean, it's nice to have comfort in your agency, but that to me is not the biggest concern. The biggest concern is ensuring that if individuals out there, businesses, whatever, violate these laws, that they can be prosecuted because if they have no fear of that, it'll continue as it has now and has it has for many years. You know, EPA's become almost, you don't have sharp teeth anymore. I don't see you as having sharp teeth, I don't fear you. I fear criminals out there, but I don't fear you as a regulatory agency these days and I think that's what we need to look at. So I appreciate the desire moving forward with this, but I don't think that the discussion this afternoon really gives me enough information to say that this is the way to go, especially when I understand the need at the, at the Attorney General's Office to address proper prosecution. I think that's something we need feedback, I don't know if the AG, I don't see any testimony from the AG's Office here, but I don't think we should piecemeal this issue because it'll be another department and agency coming up saying, we want our own legal counsel and we want our own legal counsel and we have federal funds, but if we don't have federal funds, I guess the taxpayer of Guam will have to absorb that or the next promotion or the next increment will be something the taxpayer will have to pay for. And I don't want to pay for attorneys at one end and attorneys at the other end. I think we need to consolidate those resources and maximize our taxpayer dollars so that we actually get the impact where we need it and that, to me, is being able to prosecute these cases, especially when there's such major violations happening around us. And without it, I mean, who's going to fear Guam EPA and they don't fear Bureau of Planning at all? You know, if Bureau of Planning is looked at as a nice agency and they have input, but I don't fear you either. EPA is the one with the bigger regulatory capability and, you know, so what, you keep issuing notice of violation, if they don't respond, then what? Everything, nothing. And I don't think that's what ultimately we want to see. So I just bring forth these reservations, like I said, I've been in your shoes, done your job, but I, I feel that there has to be a bigger picture issue that needs to be addressed on how the government of Guam is going to proceed with having counsel in each and every agency, which ultimately what everyone's going to want to do, and then not be able to address that capability where the actual authority rests to prosecute. So that's my reservation at this point with this legislation. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you Senator Brown. Senator, first of all, I'd like to recognize Senator Canata, thank you for being here. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll certainly share a lot of the concerns that Senator Brown mentioned, but I will say, 2024 is going to be a good year to be an attorney, that's for sure, no matter what happens. But I thank you for your very thorough, very detailed presentation, maybe a little over-thorough, you had me in the first couple minutes, but I definitely appreciate that and there's still wealth of information that we can look over and hopefully address some of the concerns raised by yourselves and the panel. And also it's good to see you, Mr. Nick. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Senator Barnett. Senator Shelton?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. No questions from me, but I'd like to thank you for the presentation as well. I think I, I knew the mission of both your agencies, but I didn't realize before this presentation how much you really have on your plate and how necessary this representation, legal representation for you is, and for you as well, EPA. So I appreciate the knowledge and I, I support the efforts. Thank you.
This is Masi. Senator Canata, you're recognized. Okay, thank you. Yeah, and so, yeah, this bill was actually inspired by your former legal counsel and yeah, she basically knew that there was a void that was left and there was a need to have attorneys, and so that's what really inspired me to do this bill. And I think, you know, the laws are only as strong as the people that are implementing them. And so we really, I mean, this is something that I've been pushing for, for Guam EPA's to ensure that they have a steady workforce because, you know, as we hear, not just with Guam EPA, but also with the Police Department, you know, other agencies, there is a mass exodus or a mass retiring, whether it's retiring or looking for positions with higher pay. And so, you know, that, this is part of that effort to make sure that our, our agencies have the necessary workforce to carry out the mandates. And like I said earlier, there are lots of mandates and this is only to protect our very precious island and the resources and the people that live here and, you know, we hear the need. I think you both made a strong case about the need for this. You have federal funds and you've had this federal funds from, for, for six years, according to Guam EPA, you've had these federal funds to pay for the services, the legal services and so it's, we're not dipping into any new source of funding, it's the current status quo of funding. And, you know, you've testified BSP that you have federal funds available, so it's not going to be dipping into, you know, hopefully not, in the future too, as far as local funds are concerned. You are both adept at federal fund, you know, seeking those funds. And the need is there and I think it's important to have a consistency in the workforce. So I appreciate your time, is there any further comments that you would like to make, Edwin?
Yeah, so, so I just want to, you know, point out that the benefits of having strong legal representation doesn't always manifest itself in the courtroom. There are many instances where the negotiations and the coordination prior to this going into the courts for legal action can be attained, and I'll name, name two examples. There was a time where money was appropriated to construct a covert in Tumon to dump all of that, all of that runoff into Tumon Bay. And the Corps of Engineers at the time determined that that was not going to be a direct discharge into the waters of the US. But by having an attorney on staff at the time, we were able to make a strong argument that the, that the water that they were going to divert into the sandy area of Tumon does constitute waters of the US. So it's through that, that having strong legal representation in the negotiation phase, we were able to win that argument. So that provides an example where you have these benefits that are, that we can attain and that are important, that doesn't necessarily have to manifest itself whether or not a legal action is, is taken. I would also, I would also note that through strong legal representation that in dealing with matters before the, the US military, that we're able to have these kind of agency debates in terms of where our policy ends and where theirs begins in a way that we can come to a resolution. For example, the dredging in Inner Opera Harbor to lay cable landings was an issue that we had to work internally with our attorney at the time and DOD attorneys and then come up with a resolution. There's also other important issues that can be addressed by having an attorney that's not necessarily manifest itself in a action of an Assistant Attorney General winning something. It could also be the, the improvement in the clarity of administrative adjudic, of the rules. So part of the issue is why laws are not enforced is because the rules are so antiquated. For example, the fishing regulations, I think you can catch like 100 belati or something a day per person, but the action necessary to update those rules, you know, are an administrative challenge. So our focus is on that administrative process that helps to improve and provide clarity to, to regulations. And so that's how the attorney would benefit us, as an example, which doesn't necessarily mean that it's a case that would have to be sponsored by an Assistant Attorney General.
Okay. Are there any further testimonies?
I want to add a comment, Madam Chair.
Okay, Senator Brown, you're recognized.
There's nothing to prevent Assistant Attorney General from advising and doing both and that, as I mentioned, we, we started that whole process of getting an Assistant Attorney General that we funded at Guam EPA and paid for their full salary and they were dedicated full-time to serving the agency, they actually were housed physically in the agency. So I don't know, is that something you've discussed or pursued with the Attorney General? So- So the case of Guam PA, you're saying you had that service up until January, then this attorney was reassigned?
Right, yeah. In the time that I've been with the agency, I believe, early 2017 through this past January, we did have an Assistant Attorney General duty stationed at Guam PA for that purpose.
Well, again, I mean, it's a viable program. It's worked. I would like to get feedback from the Attorney General and find out how we can proceed. And like I said, we had our Assistant Attorney General housed in our agency, therefore we knew, you know, and making sure that they were working full-time. Because I can see how easy, if they're out of sight, you know, they get reassigned to other things, and then you're still waiting for feedback. But maybe there's a middle ground that can be met now. It's been met in the past. It's been effective. Maybe that's something we need to look at a little further. As I mentioned, that's my reservation. I don't see how the taxpayers of Guam are going to benefit having paying for in-house counsel. Maybe, you know, great, the federal funds are here, but I know that doesn't always last. And then it becomes our burden, and then I don't see how we're going to benefit paying both the operations of the Attorney General's Office and then individual attorneys in your respective agencies. Even though, again, I'm very much for the prosecution of environmental violations, and I understand the need to strengthen our capabilities in that area, but I also look at it in terms of what the cost is going to be and the government essentially having two houses of attorneys all over the place and paying the bill for that, especially when I see so many other critical needs in this government that we are not funding, where we actually interface directly with our public. So that's just my reservation with regards to this bill moving forward at this time without that additional input. Appreciate the time, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Senator Brown. And I will reach out to the Attorney General for a formal testimony. Okay, just want to thank everyone that came here today to prepare for the testimony and definitely looking forward to, you know, maybe addressing some of the issues that came up today. So if there are no further testimony or comments on Bill 249-37, this bill has been duly heard. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 p.m. We can extend the date. It says March 14th because we are now at March, today is March 13th. So we can continue to receive testimony until March 18th. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez. Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning be dropped off the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or email to office@senatorparas.org. Sis Massey. So we're going to get ready for the next panel. Thank you so much. Have a great day. We're going to get ready for the next panel. So we're here, the next item on the agenda is to hear testimony on Bill Number 198-37, introduced by the Committee on Maritime Transportation, Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education and the Advancement of Women, Youth and Senior Citizens at the request of ECONgressin Manhobin Guahan. The Guam Youth Congress, in accordance to 2GCA Section 7102, is an act to amend Section 3116 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring the distribution of driver's handbooks to Guam, the Guam Public High Schools. So I'd like to allow Senator Shelton to provide, and the Guam Youth Congress afterwards, provide their comments. Senator Shelton, you're recognized.
Sis Massey, Madam Chair, hafiday. And sis Massey for hearing, having this public hearing on Bill 198-37, and for the opportunity to briefly introduce this measure, which has been introduced at the request of the 34th Guam Youth Congress. Bill Number 198-37 is an act to amend Section 3116 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring the distribution of driver's handbooks to Guam Public High Schools. Madam Chair, if adopted, Bill 198-37 requires the Department of Revenue and Taxation, in coordination with the Department of Education, to provide public high school students with access to copies of the DRT Operator's Handbook. Bill 198-37 requires the handbooks to be made available and prominently displayed at each public high school library. Currently, DRT is authorized by law to charge $5 per operator's handbook, which is the same cost for a chauffeur's handbook and motorcycle handbook. Bill 198-37 proposes that these materials be provided as a learning resource for DOE high school students free of charge. While I recognize that BBMR, through information provided in the bill's fiscal note, anticipates a fiscal impact if Bill 198-37 is approved, I'm confident DOE will be able to work closely with the Department of Revenue and Taxation and other agencies, including the Office of Technology, to develop a system enabling any of our 9,000-plus high school students to access the DRT Operator's Handbook through printed and online copies. In closing, Bill 198-37 recognizes the importance of supporting students who are working toward obtaining a driver's license, particularly as they and their families explore ways to secure transportation to and from classes and after-school sports, academic activities and employment. With that, I look forward to our discussion today and to working with our colleagues to include any amendments that may be needed to move Bill 198-37 forward. Sis Massey, Madam Chair.
Sis Massey. Senator Shelton, so we have a representative, I believe, from the Guam Youth Congress. If you could state your name. Thank you.
My name is Ty Whittaker. I'm the Guam Youth Congress Representative of GIGO. I would like to apologize on behalf of our speaker. She really wanted to come here, but she couldn't miss class again, unfortunately. But I'm here to read her testimony on her behalf. If that's okay. Her testimony goes, Buenos dias, hafiday. My name is Lily Vinch, and I am the representative of the 34th Guam Youth Congress. I currently serve as a speaker in our body and am also a senior at Guam High School. This bill, Bill 198-37 LS, was first introduced as Bill 9-34COR, an act to amend Article 3116 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring the distribution of driver's handbooks to Guam Public High Schools. In our Guam Youth Congress session, this bill was voted through our body and demonstrated the front that we all hold for the value of accessible education for the betterment of our youth. I would like to begin by expressing my gratitude to the committee for holding a public hearing on this bill and giving the youth a chance to be heard. This bill acknowledges the financial struggles students may face in acquiring a learner's permit, that digital access is not possible for everyone, especially those for whom English is their second language, and the importance of having personal identification to access government assistance programs and to obtain employment. The steps involved in acquiring driver's license of utmost importance for young, are of utmost importance for young individuals, that is a significant milestone that marks the transition into adulthood. However, many students face significant barriers when it comes to accessing the necessary resources to prepare for their driving test. Our youth organization has recognized this issue, and we are committed to facilitating access to driver's handbook resources through this bill. We have conducted research and spoken to students who have cited limited access, time and transportation as significant barriers to accessing these resources. Our goal is to ensure that all students, regardless of their background or circumstances, have equal access to the resources they need to prepare for their driving test and acquire their license. Through this bill, we aim to provide students with a comprehensive set of resources that equip them with the knowledge and skills they need to pass their driving test. By removing at least one barrier to accessing these resources, we are confident that we can help more young individuals achieve this critical milestone in their lives. By requiring the distribution of driver's handbooks to Guam Public High Schools, remove one more difficult step. These students are just trying to learn and become the educated drivers we all want on the road. This bill aims to start streamlining this process and give them that help. I would like to thank this committee for hearing our request and for allowing our bill and the youth to express our voices for the betterment of our future. Sis Massey. That was speakers.
All right, sis Massey. What is your name again? Whittaker?
My name's Ty Whittaker.
Ty Whittaker, thank you so much, Ty, and being here and providing the testimony on behalf of the speaker and the 34th Guam Legislature, I'm sorry, 34th Youth Congress. Okay, so we'll have questions later, perhaps. So now I'd like to recognize Director Serenigan, Chris? Yeah, you're recognized for your testimony.
Yes. Madam Chair, and Senator Canata, Senator Shelton, half a day. My name is Krishnan Sirangan, Director of the Guam Public Library System, would like to submit my written testimony concerning the bill Number 198-37. Guam Public Library System has six branch libraries located on various villages on Guam, and one bookmobile is, one bookmobile is out there, but it's not functional, it's not functioning at the moment. Maria Rivera Agugui Memorial Library, known as Haaget Public Library. Rosa Agugui Rages Memorial Library, known as Meloso Public Library. Gartner Public Library, known as Nevis M. Floris Memorial Library, located at 254 Matit Street, Gartner, Guam. Dedro Public Library, Berigada Public Library and Jonia Library, and in addition to one bookmobile, which we are planning to launch in the near future. We believe these libraries can serve Guam Public by providing the resources, both hard copies and digital copies. We support this bill wholeheartedly. High school students from public schools, private schools and charter schools will benefit from the bill because the bill is articulate as to how we can make this resource available and accessible. The Guam Public Library System collaborates with the school librarians by sharing and training and sharing the resources. We have students from public schools use our libraries on various, located on various locations. We issue students library cards so that they can access to our eBooks and other resources. So we work closely with the Department of Education. At present, we take lots of pride of getting involved in distributing all passport forms, brochures for Commission for Decolonization and all kinds of social security forms. And there is a new book that's out there. It's called Charlan Distrib, Desk Beer Magazine, published by Guam Greencroft and other local and federal entities. There are, they are, they are available, our, they are available in our libraries. In this case, we will have to go to all the school libraries and deliver them. So Guam Public Library System can play an important role in distributing driver's licenses to Guam Public Schools, Guam Private Schools, Guam Charter Schools and other high schools by the following methods: delivering the driver's license handbook to high school librarians, posting on digital library, digital copy on our website, and by having copies available in all our libraries. Since it will take manpower to distribute successfully, there is a cost involved. At the moment, we do not have that many, that much manpower to distribute these resources. However, if, if fund is available, we should be able to do the job. And I mentioned all the other schools, other than the Guam Public Schools, that we, as public library, consider all the people of Guam part of this program, and we wanted to serve to all the people of Guam, not just our public schools.
Sorry, thank you. Does that complete your testimony?
Yes.
Director? Okay, great. Thank you for your presentation, yeah, because that provides an opportunity to expand the reach of this bill. So currently, the bill basically addresses Department of Revenue and Taxation and the Department of Education. It doesn't talk about strictly public high schools. It doesn't address private high schools. And so having the public library system can make it accessible to the wider community, those that are not even, that are not attending public school. So I do appreciate that recommendation. In fact, that was a recommendation, we did receive an email from Superintendent Swanson, and it states, "Dear Senator Perez, I'm writing in support of the subject bill and agree that expanding access to the driver's handbook, handbooks through our high school libraries. I would also add that providing a similar service to the Guam Public Library would expand capacity even more. Providing another channel to legal driving licensure is always desirable. Respectfully submitted, Superintendent Eric Swanson." So he was, I don't know if you guys collaborated, collaborated on the testimony, but you guys were thinking along the same lines.
Our school librarians come to our public libraries. We have, we provide trainings. We share a lot of resources. In fact, the grant that we received two years ago for eBooks from Interior Department of Interior, and we have used up that funds by launching eBooks and audiobooks and magazines. And now it's available on our websites. And also, we are pleased to inform you that the Department of Education did give us money for the, for the, from the passport funding. It's called Guam Public School Resource Fund, which is about $200,000. Since it came very late, we were not able to use. However, this year, we are, we are making sure that we will get the fund in time so that we can make use of the fund to purchase, purchase a lot of technology and other resources.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, we need to also seek the Department of Revenue and Taxation. I guess we need to follow up with them to see what is available on their end. You know, perhaps, I know, according to the fiscal note, the estimated cost would be $49,000 for, based on 9,800 students in the public high school system. But if we can, you know, make this more cost-effective through, you know, having it available as an electronic version.
Yes.
It probably would have more reach too, I would imagine.
Yes.
You know, it'd be easier to access with, especially with the youth today, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, yes.
Ty, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Are students more likely to access things online or?
The digital copy.
You as a representative for the public school?
Yes.
Or the high school students? Or what is your, what is your insight?
In my experience, I think it's a bit more effective to give students a physical copy. A lot of times, teachers would give like work online and stuff, and there's a lot that doesn't get finished. But I think definitely, I believe there already is online copies available. So those are definitely able to be accessed already. You can just Google it, and it'll come up. The reason I wanted to give out physical copies was because I think it's a lot easier, at least for me and some other people I ask, to get these resources directly and to use them. Like, I suppose, when I go on my computer and stuff, I can get pretty distracted and whatnot. So I always like having a physical copy. But really, another important part of this bill is to have the teachers there to help out the students with the stuff. The reason we're putting it in these schools is so they can assist the students, especially students who have trouble understanding the language it's written in. I'm not sure if we have, I don't believe we have different languages yet. We have people to help take the test in different languages, but as far as studying, I think having those teachers there to help the students would definitely benefit them as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that response. I think that adds another potential amendment, to have it in different languages. So that's something we definitely look, need to look into and see. Obviously, it's going to come down to funding and maybe talking to the Department of Education to see what kind of funding's available, as well as the public library, so, as well as Department of Revenue and Taxation. Yes, Mr. Whittaker?
I wanted to speak. In regards to funding, if it's really a big issue, I think we can make, probably make some a little more robust copies that can be reused at these schools. And we wouldn't have to make one for each and every student, but we could borrow them out, just like a library book, and have them present it out to students and just try and promote it that way, just for cost effectiveness.
Yeah, great suggestions. Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We can add that, definitely look into that. But yeah, I would definitely have to reach out to the stakeholders to see how to implement such a thing. All right, I'd like to rec- All right. I'd like to recognize my colleagues for any questions or comments. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam. I don't have any questions. I appreciate you providing your testimony. I think we can all appreciate the need to have safe and informed drivers out there on the roadway, and the earlier and the sooner that we provide that opportunity to our students that are eligible to drive, the better. I know, and back in the day, certainly, when it was our time to learn to drive a car and be able to go out and, you know, get through our driver's test, we were so excited. And I'm sure that's an experience all our young people are looking forward to, and anytime we have an opportunity to facilitate information, it's a very good thing. So, thank you to both of you for coming and providing your testimony.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to thank Mr. Chris and also the Youth Congress and commend them for the great work they've been doing this term. You guys have sent some pretty good legislation and, more importantly, I think, pretty good ideas about some of the things that our young people are discussing and wanting to see come into fruition. So, I thank you for your testimony, Mr. Whittaker. And also, Mr. Chris, I want to congratulate you, because I just saw that you sent out a press release announcing your new hours. And I think, obviously, with the struggles that we face with literacy, the more people can have access to the Guam Public Library System, right, the more they can avail of the improvements that you've made to the system. So, I just wanted to commend you on that. And obviously, it's a great bill that you guys have sent our way, and I look forward to its quick passage. Soodzmasi, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Shelton, my apologies, I should have-- okay, Senator Canata, you're recognized.
Mr. Whittaker, just wanted to thank you for your service and thank you for stepping up and being a part of finding solutions for our island. Certainly, very proud to see the Youth Congress. As a former Youth Congress member, Senator Shelton and I, I think, are very much proud to see the generation stepping up again. And also, congratulations to the library for getting its new hours and opening up its doors to the people again. Very good to hear that. But nothing further, Madam Chair. Thank you.
If I can also add on to the congratulations, congratulations to Director Serangan for getting the 2024 National Medal for Museum and Library Service Award. And I, you know, believe I'm very happy to see that you awarded this. And can you maybe explain to the public what does this bring?
Yes, this is-- they nominated 15 libraries out of 129,000 libraries, and I'm very happy to inform that Guam Public Library System is one of those 15 libraries. So, the final will be-- sometime will be announced sometime next month. Out of the 15 libraries, they will-- they select three libraries, and we are hoping that we will be one of them. And it is even 15 out of 129,000 libraries. 15 libraries is-- one of the 15 libraries is a great thing, and it's going to be a -- hoping that we will be one of the three libraries. And if-- not only the award, it's also a lot of grants, you know, we will be able to apply for a lot of grants.
So, yeah, good luck to you as far as reaching the semifinals, and you're looking forward to you, hopefully, getting the award, and that would really definitely push this agenda forward.
Yes.
You know, to expand driver's license books and other literacy. That's something that also I've been pushing for, is increasing literacy, especially amongst our youth. You know, I'm looking at birth to five before they even reach school age, because that's really a critical time to develop literacy and also get them ready for school. So, we know that there are some households that don't have access to books or access to reading materials, and it's called the 30 million shortage of-- basically, it's literate poor households, and they're already behind in school. And so, you know, I really, you know, wish you the best.
Thank you, Madam.
In helping promote this, you know, overall literacy work. And I do appreciate all the work that you're doing. You brought the Guam Public Library System into the 21st century. And so, I think it had to do with a procurement bill that was passed in the last term.
Yes.
Sponsored by Vice Speaker Tina Rosemary Barnes. And, you know, I'm glad to see that it's having a huge impact. And also, the work that you've done, you know, you came from the public school library system, and you're putting your institutional knowledge to really good use and really being a true advocate. So, soodzmasi for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the kind words. I also would like to know that we recently launched and posted almost 7,000 resources, eBooks, audiobooks, magazines. Out of the 3,000 eBooks, within a month's time, 1,500 books were checked out. It's getting to be very popular. So, it costed us about $120,000, which we borrowed from the Interior Department, and we are hoping to put more books on our websites.
Great news. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, at this point, I would like to recognize Senator Shelton for any closing remarks.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Director Serangan, congratulations on all of the progress that you've made with the public library system. Good luck on the next step for this award and the recognition. And I want to thank you very much for your willingness to collaborate and to step up to the plate, to be of service if this bill is to go through, to be one of the resources for us to use for our young people to pursue driver's education. And Representative Whittaker, thank you very much for your leadership on the issue as well, and we look forward to working with the Chair to report out this bill. Soodzmasi.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Shelton.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Whittaker, and also the 34th Guam Youth Congress, Director Serangan for your efforts and advocacy. If there are no further testimonies or comments, this Bill 198-37COR is duly heard. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM Thursday-- 4:00 PM, March 19, 2024. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It can be dropped off the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or email to We will now adjourn. The time is now 3:41 PM. Soodzmasi. Have a great day.